...in different types of scenarios. We assume the role of an IT management team tasked with securing an existing network and closing up as many threats as we can find. Obviously, we don't compete using real hackers or real personal computers. But the skills we learn can definitely have real-world effects, and we can definitely use that when we grow up to get a job and make sure we can protect. And as I stated, I'm part of the Team Iron Crabs consisting of six members that range through one 6th grader and 8th graders. Our team was fortunate enough to be able to make it to the national semifinals on our first year of competing, so it was a big accomplishment for us. We have a second middle team, a middle school team called The Walruses consisting of eight members, and a high school team not nicknamed consisting of three members. Thanks for listening to me, and then here's Wyatt Ashley.
This is a picture of the middle school teams. In regular competition, we're in one of the rooms in the high school competing for eight hours. On each computer, there's different images or copied computers on the computer, so we can change and make it more secure. If we make a mistake, we're not ruining a computer. But we're scored instantly throughout it, so we can know our score at the end. Then we have a portion that's networking. The networking part is a little complicated. We use Cisco Cacti Tracer to make little networks and try and mimic them. In a competition scenario, we would be given a network and told to set it up or to fix some of the problems. Cisco said by 2020, too, there is 3.6 devices per capita. That's over 28.5 billion devices, and most of those will be connected to the Internet, and all of them will have to be secured for different information.
So recently, ours, the two middle school teams have created a YouTube channel that everyone can access. All the videos on it are made, edited, and posted by members of the team, and our goal for it was to mainly help anyone that needs to, that wanted tips to stay secure with their daily lives, as well as other server-centric teams that wanted some tips. Thank you for your time.
Thank you especially to Mr. Thron, who was supporting us throughout our entire journey.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate that. I'll just say that back in the day, I happened to know your grandpa, and probably already there's a few things that maybe you could teach him. Keep up the good work.
This might be a good time for some questions.
Yes.
If you're like me, we had, came into this, we all know about cybersecurity, we think we know a little bit. These three, and Mrs. Deversa, know a lot more than all of us. Natalie, do you want to share a little bit about our teams and the process, and maybe some of the accomplishments of the teams this year?
Sure. I was actually surprised the organization suggested wait a year to start competing, but we were given a grant, so I'm like, oh, we'll start this year like that. And we, I mean, I was just, I mean, I have belief in my students, but I was shocked when we placed, we're looking at the board, and we're in first place. Everyone's getting excited, and it's, you know, because you can see it all in real time, the competition, it's all in mind. And we're competing with people from all over the country, and even North America, Canada too, so it's pretty amazing. And a lot of schools are contacting me, you know, how do we start it out? Because there's no other open county school that has a server security team, so it's pretty neat that we're trying to get other schools on board, and we can collaborate because what they're learning, it's all research-based. So I, we brought in a professional, a mentor, and even when they ask questions, we have to search it ourselves, because we don't always know all the answers, and that's what the students, and these are my three, above and beyond the words I gave to them, because they just continue, they didn't give up, they kept searching on their own time. And because there's so many parts of the competition, you are trying to secure practice images, and then you're doing another competition with networking, and the team has to learn how to use their time wisely, because there's so much to do in that little period of time. So learning, you know, how to work as a team, networking, just amazing. I also wanted to thank the high school for their support, because we go over to the high school, the middle school takes the bus over to the high school, and the tech support has been amazing there, including our tech support here. Kurt Myers helped me as well, you know, and it's amazing. Wow, the kids are, yeah, there's some pretty cool stuff here. Yes, they are. But yeah, Mr. Weaver also helped us with the grants, and we've had a lot of support from the experts, so we're pretty lucky here.
Great. Any more questions?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I'm excited to see this team starting up. You know, I think you guys already understand you're developing real marketable skills. I love the presentation you're speaking my way, I live in the IT industry, and so this is something that I live and breathe every day. So it's exciting to see young guys like you really diving in and enjoying what you're doing. So, you know, with Internet of Things, communication devices really expanding right now, we need, we're going to need guys like you with these skills coming into the industry. So I'm real proud of you guys. I think what you did here, the great, nice work.
Thank you.
Same thing, I was just, you know, I know you guys don't stage, do the whole board meeting, they make a lot of comments at the end, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew. Congratulations. So, you know, my kids have taken Mrs. Deversa's classes, and she's always kind of on the brink of all the cool stuff, and you guys really did a great job presenting, and I'm really proud of you guys. You guys should be proud of yourselves, that was awesome. Really good job.
What kind of background would you suggest somebody has before they get into it, or if they're just interested? Can they join your team? I mean, how do you recruit?
Mainly interested in computers is what helps. We, most of us, I believe in the program, just hadn't interested in computers and learning how to protect computers as well, and then that kind of just got us all interested into it.
No, and I didn't know that statistic of 3.6 units per capita, so that means four devices each person is connected to. And wow, and the lack of cybersecurity we have, you know, right now, because I think they're just starting to develop programs now, like certificate and associate programs for this, but it is, it's an amazing field to get into, constantly changing. I'm glad you guys are excited by it, and I hope that you can get some more students involved. Good job, good job.
And an upcoming threat to, the self-driving cars that they're trying to make, they've been proven in multiple ways hackable in a lot of aspects. So that can be super dangerous if we don't have security on those, so that's what we can do with that.
I'm working with, I'm working with those people working on the self-driving.
They're available, Chad.
I've actually driven those cars before, they're actually, it's pretty slick. But, but like you say, those cars have to talk back to the data center, like, you know, thousands of times a second, so we have to make sure that that communication is always secure, so that's what this, that's what this is doing.
Yes. So why do we have two teams?
Oh, mostly because there's a lot of people, and if we have all in one, isn't there, is there a maximum for a team? Yeah, there are too many people, so.
I'm just wondering why you didn't like combine your superpowers in one. But then, I think that gives you the opportunity to test each other. So now you have two teams, and you can kind of like set up scenarios and test each other out, and each other better. Yeah, scrimmage, right?
We actually started, we can only have six on a team, between two and six on a team, and so it's like, well, I don't know how many people we're going to have here. So we had one high school team and two middle school teams, and the high school team did well, did well, they scored the top 50% in the nation out of 2,000 teams, so they did it really, really well, top two. And then the middle school, they were competing against each other and looking at the scoreboard, because the second team, they were second place for our first competition in the make outs, you know? So this is really.
And when I said that the other team had eight members, we actually have two alternates, and a lot of the times they kind of help our team out during it. If there's somebody not there, or if somebody had to leave for a small period of time, we have an alternate to fill in.
So when you go to a competition, do you have to bring your own hardware, computers, or is it all set up for you already?
Well, we do it in a computer lab in the.
You do it in a lab? Oh, okay.
The company gives us the images that we have to download onto the computers ahead of time, and then they give us the code, and as soon as you activate the code is when the competition ends. And there's different images, there's practice Windows images, we've been to their learning, server images, so basically similar to what they put on our computers here, disclose certain images that you have access to different apps, it's similar.
Okay. Do we have any girls on the teams?
Yes, we have three rock stars on our team, and other cybersecurity organization, we found out later through research that they offer, if you have an all-girls team, it's free admission, so you don't have to have, so we're working on that for next year.
Mr. Thron.
I would just like to say, Natalie, I appreciate you being an example and willing to start something new, take a chance, and I really appreciate that.
Picking back on Mr. Thron's comment there, the easy thing would have been to just wait a year, but our 8th graders only have an infinite amount of time, right? And that year could be the difference between them getting involved in this or getting involved in something else. So that's why we really push the envelope to do things in a controlled environment so that we can give everybody opportunities. So thank you very much for believing in our students and leaving them in a positive direction. Appreciate it very much. Okay, anybody else? Jack, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're hearing a little bit more about them. We've got some 8th graders moving up to the high school team, and yeah, Mr. Weaver had emailed us this summer, and so had Mr. Thron, that's cybersecurity team. How, Natalie? How, what is this? Even the application was in the language when that was up, so we've really all learned a lot, and fortunately, we should have, Natalie, and the team, so. Thank you for your attention and your interest, and of course, your support. I do want to let you know that at Oxford Middle School, we finished the PSAT eight today. We only had 11 students that we, that were absent today, and we knew where all of them were, and it was a really good testing environment for our students. I look forward to seeing their scores, because I know that they've been well-prepared, but our staff was very well-prepared today to handle teaching 6th and 7th graders and welcoming our 6th and 7th graders in while the testing was going on for 8th graders. So unlike the high school, where school, you know, some students just don't come to school that day, on testing day, we did a balancing act. So our team, led by Christie and Carl, Anna Summers, and Heather Thicke, did an outstanding job, so we're kind of breathing a sigh of relief tonight, because that part is over, we're on to M-Step tomorrow, and.
That's a piece of cake.
Yeah, a piece of cake, that's a piece of cake, so. But welcome to OMS, and hope you're good eating here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, Board of Education Matters, Graduation Alliance.
Mr. Del Sandro, if you could go up front, and Guy, if you could come up front as well. We want to recognize two more of our Graduation Alliance graduates tonight, and so the first person that I'd like to announce and have come up is Michaela Amundson.
It's yours. Mr. Donnelly's at the hospital, so we will sign it and we will mail it. You have to make it official. Okay. Congratulations, so awesome job.
And our second graduate is Neera Marshall.
When she gets here, we'll do it all over, I guess. And I already graduated, so.
Thank goodness.
Michaela, was there any speech that you wanted to give, or?
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done.
Okay, great. Item number six, Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Weaver.
Usually this is where he clears out, but. Finance and Operations, Mr. Thron.
Yes, I'm doing this for Mr. Barnett tonight, so for you, we have a recommendation for action, and this is to approve our moving vendor for the summer's bond work.
Okay. We have a motion. Chad.
We'll approve Corvina Moving Systems as recommended by Clark Construction for moving services in the amount of $74,745.
Support? For Mr. Foster? All in favor? Or, I'm sorry, discussion?
Let's be clear, because I missed the last meeting, so I had contacted Time about this. I just want to make sure I understand this before I go, because it's a lot of money for moving. So he explained to me that this, because I read the board packet, but it wasn't really clear on that either. So we're going to pay this company, they're going to come into the different schools as we're doing the construction projects, and say like they did the library, they would move everything out, and like what, pod, store it, or do what with it?
So it depends on the building, and it depends on the room.
Oh, okay.
So some rooms, teachers will be boxing stuff up, and will just be moving things within the rooms that they have access. Other rooms will be totally gutted. Some of that material may be stored in outside containers. Other things that are more environmentally sensitive, like computers and things like that, will have a combined area, like a media center, or a gymnasium, or that kind of thing, and those items will be stored there while that room gets gutted in.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The last thing under Operations is just, I want to let everybody know, if you haven't heard already, that congratulations to Sam and all those that he enlisted to help him put the safety grant together. We were notified of our award, and it was in the amount of $442,773.
Woo!
Just awesome work, it's really going to help out all of our buildings, and we are really excited to put this money to good use, so just wanted to publicly announce that.
Very good.
There's a question on there. Very fast for clarification. I did read the letter, but I just wanted to go over the, this is a matching grant, so we have that 442,773, and we are matching part of that grant. Could you just explain that briefly?
25%, so roughly a little over $100,000. And quite honestly, we had more than that budgeted that we were going to spend anyways, and so, yeah, this is just going to let us quadruple the amount of work that we can do, so.
Great. Thank you.
Tim, do we have a list of needs, wants?
Yes.
And does this, 442 plus our 25%, a little over $100,000, does that cover that you need and wants, or is there anything over and above that, that moving forward, we would, obviously, security is one of those things that happen that, you know, it's great today, and then you have to rethink.
So I'll put it this way, does it check off everything on our list? No. Does it get us way farther down on the piece of paper than not? Absolutely. I also think that security, quite honestly, from this day forward, is just going to become an annual line item in our budget, and that we're constantly just going to have to throw resources at it to try and keep on top of it. Will we always spend this amount of money? No, we won't, but I think it is something that pretty much, yeah, from this point forward, we'll always have that in our, in our budget that we're going to have to spend on something.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Item eight, Human Resources, Mr. Bass. Item nine, Student Services.
We're right along.
Item 10, Unscheduled Audience Participation. Are we going to slow this down in case she comes? Is she on her way, on her way, or?
She was, she, the last contact I had with her, she was going to come tonight to the board meeting, but that was, that was prior to the break. It was stuck, you had a hold of her at the beginning.
Okay.
She worked, so it could have been a change of work right there.
I just want to make sure that we didn't, a jan and she shows up.
But I do, I know the family very well, so I will make sure, you know.
I want to make sure she gets her diploma.
Absolutely, that's guaranteed.
Okay, very good. Unscheduled Audience Participation. Shall we? Scheduled Activities. Put my glasses on, because these are some good ones today. We have OVA capstone projects coming up in May. OVA and OSEC commencements, Bridges commencements, High School commencements, all coming up in May, so board members just double-check your calendars, and if you haven't already, we received an email with our gown requests, so for you, board members, make sure you turn that in, because you might get a gown that fits me that Mary, so.
There they are.
Look at that, see? Knocking that jern. I'm right up front here.
Right up front?
Yep. I think Mr. Cooper said it has something for you.
Let her mom get her phone and stuff out.
Yeah.
You ready?
So under a new line item, Unscheduled Activities, we're going to actually go backwards a little bit, and I would like to introduce to everyone Neera Marshall, and congratulations on her diploma through Graduation Alliance.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Get that?
Thank you.
You're welcome, here. Well, that's the one time in my life my timing has been perfect. All right. Clarification, item 12.
None.
None? Final Board Comments. Mary.
Congratulations, Michaela and Neera. I just love seeing these students coming through, getting their diplomas, this is a really super great part of this job. And congratulations to the cybersecurity team. I was, a couple years ago, I went through the Leadership McComb Program, and that was one of the really big pieces that we learned about is the lack of training in cybersecurity, and all of us were so connected, we really don't understand how vulnerable all of us are personally, and everything that we run on in this country. Well, we do know when our Windows update keeps going through and going through, we can't run our computer, gosh, what do I do? So congratulations for everybody, and Natalie for stepping up and getting involved with that, it's so exciting. I want to wish safe travels to Oxford High School Band and Orchestra Programs as we travel to New York City, leaving tomorrow morning, which I get to go on that trip, I'm excited about, and just a shout-out to High School Robotics Team, who are competing in Saginaw, Saginaw Valley State University, and the state championships this weekend. You can find us on ESPN3, 132137. So I really don't believe in luck, so I just, I see that their robot's going to do really well, and our chairman's team is up for an award, so it's going to be a great time. If anybody wants to cruise up to Saginaw, it's a nice little drive. That's what I think.
Is that covered by state champs shows, while?
There's a couple of online programs that follow that, there's like RoboZone.
Yep, they do a very good job with that. It's usually the state champs, it's the sports channel, and they cover like from football to softball and everything, but they really do a nice job covering the robotics competitions. I saw it last year, and it was like, wow, this in Oxford was on there, so it's good to see a chance. It's on Fox, so Fox Sports Detroit.
I'm excited to see what we're going to do with over $400,000 worth of money for safety. I think that's great. It's one of those things we should really be proud of ourselves for, we'll put it on the website, let our constituents know. I think a lot of good things are going to come today. And just a pat on the back to Deisha, I heard that she was mentioning her testing today is a real big deal that that went down well for the first time, so my wife came home and said, oh, it was a great day. She was organized and hit every mark, so I'll let her know on my way out, that's all.
Chad.
Yeah, so I guess welcome back from spring break. I hope everybody got some warmth. I didn't go too far, we just went to Kansas to visit K-State, but that was a good trip. It was a reality check sitting at the tennis courts about an hour ago, it was freezing on top of that. But, yeah, it was good, the girls are playing well and enjoying the cold, but so congrats to Sam Barnett and again, safety, right? You know, Tim, like you said, security from this point forward is really going to be a moving target, but I think this cash is going to, it's going to get us a nice head start, so I'm excited about that, and congratulations also to Michaela and Neera, I'm proud of them for graduating, that's great news, and of course, again, I think you can see I was excited about the cybersecurity program, and it's, it's great to see young kids getting excited about that. Being a geek today is not the same as it was when we were kids. It's, in my opinion, it's something to be taught, so I certainly wear that badge of honor, but the cybersecurity in itself is, that's a growing portion of the IT industry, so we need more people with that skill set, aptitude, so I'm excited for those guys.
Heather?
I'm good, yep, ditto. Short and sweet.
Means I get your time?
You get my time, I know you will use it.
Well, Deisha left, I think she thought it was, you know, time to go, I know she's got a long ride, so. Guy, you know, it's always good when you come here, because you've always got a positive attitude, positive smiling, and our students that come through here, we should be proud to see Alitha sitting there. Our students, no matter where they're at, they're our students, and to get them through the process at their pace, and to get them through to a diploma, that's really why we sit here. It's unfortunate that we have to spend $442,000 on security these days, because it takes away opportunities for you to educate kids, no matter what level they're at, so some days it's trying, some days it's difficult, but I want you all to know that the board's behind what you do, and it's days like today when we have two graduates that, quite honestly, we might not have had a graduate, so appreciate the effort, because I know it's, every day is, there's a different challenge that's presented, so great job to both of you in your teams, so please let them know that the board supports them, and will continue to support them as we move forward. But since security is an issue, I'm glad that we were able to write a grant to get us that much-needed money, and I look forward to hearing on how we're going to fortify our security here in the building. And then, last but not least, I'm glad everybody's back from vacation, safe and sound. It wasn't such a good story for a friend of mine, his nephew was in Switzerland and was skiing and went over a cliff, and he passed away, so, you know, we read, I was just texting Tim the other day, we should count our blessings every day, that we're able to do what we do, and we're able to teach young men and women. and we're able to teach young men and women. So, and then the cybersecurity team, it's great. You said it, Chad. There was a negative connotation about being a geek. And there should never be that, that feeling. These, these kids are going to be some of the most sought after people in the next, the next workforce as we move forward. You know, you, you pay a bill on your phone, you don't really realize. And it's, you're just doing it for a matter of convenience. And your information's out there. So, you know, it's, it's great to see that we're offering that and we're touching everybody that we can. So with that, I'm grateful for your time, Heather. Tim.
Thanks again to the middle school cybersecurity team for their presentation. I think I'll just take a couple of minutes and expand on something. So a lot of times when I'm at a superintendent's meeting or maybe when I'm at a community event, some people will sort of say it this way. And I got to be careful how I say it. Why, why do you always got to be first in Oxford? Why do you got to do this? Why do you got to be that way? And so I think tonight is a good example. It's not about being the first middle school cybersecurity team. What it is about is offering our students cutting-edge opportunities that we didn't have yesterday. And, and having the staff and the employees willing to take chances and start new things and try new ideas and do things, not for the sake of doing them, but at the end of the day for, for providing a better education for our students. And so that's what it's really about. It's not about being first at something. It's about doing the right thing for the right reason. So, yeah, I'm just appreciative for Natalie for sticking her neck out and giving it a shot.
Very good.
That's all I got.
All right. Just want to make sure we're missing anything. Oh, it's good to be around.